The City of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the joint meeting between the Board of Finance and the City Council. I'd like to ask those of you who are with us to stand and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would members please introduce themselves, starting on my far right?
Mike Lamoth, Board of Finance.
Marie O'Brien, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Peter Kelly, City Council.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Dave Mills, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Jake Kater, Board of Finance.
And I'm Ellen Zappo-Sassu, Mayor and Chair of the Joint Board. Councilwoman Scott Rosado is attending to some Park Board duties and will be joining us shortly. First item on the joint meeting agenda is the Consent Calendar, which contains items 2A through J. Would any member of the joint meeting like to pull off any items for further discussion from the Consent Calendar? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any further discussion or comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And, Your Honor, can we do the approval of the minutes also?
Yes, we can. Item one, which I always skip, approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on July 9th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion on the minutes as presented and distributed. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Down to Agenda Item Three, which is the transfer of the $10,000 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund for the purchase of a backhoe from the Water Department, which is being redirected to the Parks Department.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item Four is to discuss and/or approve a mission statement for the City of Bristol. This goes within the budget document. We had discussion via email amongst the Joint Board members, which consist of Board of Finance and City Council. Those emails were attached, and we also have the three responses in terms of a direction that we can potentially look to go in. What I've distributed as a cheat sheet for everybody up here tonight, it was the original draft that we crafted, and then Marie O'Brien's comments, John Smith's comments, and Cheryl Tebow's comments. Does anybody want to open the discussion or have any comments concerning updating the city mission statement for the purposes of inclusion in the Budget Book document?
I would like to ask a question first, to confirm that it is the mission statement for the City of Bristol and not for the Controller's Office or for the Board of Finance.
I mean, I will yield to our Controller for clarification, but it is my belief that it was for the city, included within our Budget Book.
It is in the Budget Document as the City of Bristol mission statement right now.
May I ask, does the Controller's Office have a mission statement?
We do not.
And the folks that you're preparing the Budget Book for are really looking for Bristol's mission statement?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
And is this also...
Well, let me back up. Basically, what it is, is it's just looking for a mission statement. When you look at the other... It's one of the criteria for the Government Finance Officers Budget Award, is that they... That we include a mission statement of the city. I will say, there are some departments that do have their own mission statement, like the Board of Ed does, I think the Parks Department does, and the Library also has one included as well. This one is the overall one that's included in the front of the Budget Document.
Okay. Some additional questions, Mayor? Where does this mission statement appear on the website for the City of Bristol? I had difficulty finding it. Does anyone know?
I don't... I didn't even know we had one until we reviewed the Budget Book for the draft format, which is why this kind of bubbled up, because no one's quite sure the origin of the one that's been appearing in the book.
I will tell you that I spent a little bit of time, not a great deal of time, just reviewing, excuse me, a few other municipalities' websites to see if they also had mission statements, and frankly, the first thing that pops up is a typical mission statement for a department, whatever the department is. In Bristol's case, it's the Parks Department that pops up. In Manchester's case, it's the Fire Department that pops up first. In East Hartford's case, it's one of the other municipal departments. In the town of West Hartford's case, it's not a mission statement, but it is a statement that is a quote of the mayor of the town that describes the town, much as Bristol is described in a certain part of its website. But I could not find a pattern with regard to municipalities issuing mission statements that were prominently displayed on their website, or, for example, was a general statement that departments fit under.
If I can add, I think it would really be up to the community how they wanted to present it. I do know when we did look at various other Budget Documents, they varied. I mean, the mission statements did vary among, actually around the whole country. So, again, it's something that could... You know, we were hoping that we can get it in here for the whole city, to represent the mission statement for the city. We just felt, we've been spending a lot of time over the last few months reworking some of the Budget Document, trying to streamline it and reduce the number of pages, though I have to say, I think we got to the end, I don't think we took too much out. We think we kind of added a little bit more. We just didn't feel... We didn't know where the mission statement that was in the document came from, and we felt, you know, why don't we take enough... Use this opportunity, since we're looking at some of the other Budget Document areas as well, to kind of clean up and meet the GFOA criteria better, that this also needed to be updated as well. And again, it is something that could be reviewed every year. It's not something that, once it's set in stone... Because I do know when we looked at others from around, not just Connecticut, but around the country, they also kind of also added some of the strategic goals that the city had, or the town might have. So that's something down the road, once the Strategic Planning Committee moves further along, maybe that can be incorporated in the mission statement as well.
Is the Chair's this time-sensitive at all?
Well, we will be going to print. We could leave the budget... We could leave the mission statement as-is, right now, as it currently stands, or we... Because we have to... Our deadline is this week to get this done.
Through the Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. We've applied for this award, and you've won it many times. And so, we meet the criteria of having a mission statement to check that box. That is... That would be a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay. And as I mentioned, I think a facelift is always warranted sometimes in a relook, but it... And we're going through this at my nonprofit, and it's been a longer process, because we've involved our board, we've involved several of the employees, and even some of our clients that we serve. And it ends up being quite a unique process when you have several voices, and tying to our plan of conservation and everything else. So, while I think it's a great idea, I wouldn't... As I mentioned in my email, I wouldn't rush just to hit a publication deadline, but that we, you know, a task force may be formed to look at it, even with some input from citizens. I do applaud the effort, and I think it's a great idea. I just hate that we rush something and we change it again next year. I think a mission statement should be long thought out as to where we want to take the city. So I'm always hesitant to change those year to year. So, thank you.
Okay, so... Commissioner O'Brien.
So I'd like to ask support for my edit of the statement that has been in the Budget Document. You see it before you as the second item. I'll read it aloud. I believe it is a simple, more modern and contemporary switch of a few words that does not go too far from the original statement that has been used in the Budget, and certainly does not jeopardize anyone wanting to spend whatever amount of time on a future mission statement. And we all have been there and know that it will take as much time as you give it, and as many words as you give it. The other thing I'm going to point out before I read this is that I do think it's important to put the word Bristol in the mission statement. So what I'm offering tonight is to make Bristol a high-quality-of-life, destination community for residents and businesses by supporting a strong education system and ensuring long-term financial stability through innovative and responsive government services. And to close, let me just tell you, I think that is the same... Possibly the same number of words. It has dropped maybe four, five original words from the original mission, but I'd like your support for that.
Councilman Fortier.
I would... I would second Member O'Brien's suggestion. So I don't know if what her... Her... Her statement was in the form of a motion, but if not, I'd make a motion that we accept that as the mission statement, at least for this year, and we can certainly relook at it anytime someone wants to.
I do think that it makes what was in the Budget Book, that just the few tweaks that she's done, doesn't stray too far from what it has been, and I think it's a good improvement. I also like the fact that John Smith drilled down a little bit from the draft that we promulgated in terms of the correction, instead of smarter, leaner, and more innovative, streamlining it to lean, effective, and innovative was, I think, a more direct and positive way to describe it. So I do believe that there's plenty of opportunities to discuss this, but I do think that I would feel more comfortable if there was some level of blessing tonight, even just on knowing for this year, while the Strategic Planning Committee and Capital Improvement starts talking about our strategic plan, that we have something in our Budget Book for this year that represents something that we've all touched. Doesn't have to be perfect, it doesn't have to be permanent, but the fact that the other one has no providence and we're not sure where it came from, it's just a little off-putting to me. So I would support the motion and the second put on the floor for Marie O'Brien's revisions, and continue the discussion from the floor if anybody else would like to offer anything.
I would like to offer... I like Cheryl's idea of waiting, and actually, I like John Smith's verbiage a little bit better. So I think a combination of the two, and I think that you've got two very good statements, and that's why I asked about the time sensitivity, if there was something that we needed to have. And, you know, obviously, if it's due tomorrow, we have to make a decision, or the decision could be to make no decision and go with what we have. I would rather see something that is more permanent, especially if you are starting the committee or the Strategic Planning Committee, that they start with this as a basis, and then continue and form a mission statement for the city. So I would... Though I think it's a great statement by both, I would support not going forward tonight.
Anybody else have any comments? Okay.
Mission statements usually do... Are updated from time to time, and I think that if we leave it the way it is, it doesn't represent us, it doesn't represent Bristol. I think if we make the move to update the statement now and revisit it again in the future, I think that would... That would be our best way forward. So I support Marie O'Brien's change.
Councilman Kelly?
Yeah, I just think a mission statement should be fluid. You shouldn't be locked into it. And I would agree with Councilman Hahn, and Marie O'Brien, and Councilwoman Fortier as well.
So I think what we do is, we do have a motion on the floor, which we will continue to discuss and eventually take action on, but I would suggest that one of you, maybe Councilman Hahn at the end, make an official motion, so that we can have a paper trail of sending this also to the Tenure Capital Strategic Planning Committee, so that they can understand the process and maybe put forward a process for everyone to participate, including the departments that already have a mission statement, the ones that don't, and anyone from the citizenry that wants to comment over the course of the next year. Any further discussion on what has been presented to date, the discussion, and the fact that the motion is now focusing on the second item, which was the revisions presented by Marie O'Brien? Okay, so hearing none, I will entertain a motion, which is to approve the second one, to make Bristol a high-quality-of-life, destination community for residents and businesses by supporting a strong education system and ensuring long-term financial stability through innovative and responsive government services, as this year's statement that would be included in the Budget Book and represent work of this committee, the joint meeting, moving forward for this fiscal year.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So, three noes? And, okay, so the motion carries, and now is there another motion to come forward? Could someone just refer to the Strategic Planning and Tenure Capital Committee?
Yes, I refer to Strategic Planning and Tenure Capital, the ability to... A process for updating and adding mission statements.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And the next motion is the Monthly Revenue and Expense Report as presented by the Controller.
So we are in the process of still closing up the fiscal year. Obviously, it is a multi-month process at the end, trying to get everything in from all the departments and all the year-end accruals. But I think as far as our revenues go, I know I've been reporting very positively on some of the revenues for the last few months. The revenues are pretty much, I think, complete, with the exception of our tax revenues. To record our 60-day collections through the end of August, back to last year, so we won't know what those are, obviously, until the end of this month. But I think, you know, as far as building permits, we came in $452,000 more than we had anticipated. Our delinquent tax revenues exceeded our estimates by $185,000, and our motor vehicle supplement also was almost $1 million over what we had anticipated, as well as investment earnings. Came in $984,000 more than we had anticipated. That being said, with the cut in the interest rates last week, we'll just see how that... How we proceed this year. And I know we did bump up our investment income for the current year, so as far as a surplus there, I highly doubt it will be in the million-dollar range compared to this year. We generated surplus of $230,000 in sale of property and equipment. One thing to note that will be a carryover at the end of the year when they come forward next month, Park Trust revenues actually exceeded the budget by $112,000. There was a minimum distribution that the trust has to distribute, and that amount is about $112,000 more than we had budgeted. That money will be carried over at the end of the year to the park budget for the current year, to be used for park maintenance. So I just wanted to make that clear, if you were looking at the report and happened to see that. We are still waiting on the revenues for school readiness. Actually, I think it did come in, we just haven't had a chance to record it yet. That's one of the accruals that's pending. I do want to note that if you're looking at the expenditure report through the end of June 30th, 2019, on the city side, you will see an available surplus, which is quite high, it's about $5 million. Of that amount, we do know that about $3.2 million of that will be carried over. That is a road grant that we receive at the end of the year that we carry over. We also need to keep in mind that the Board of Education will need about $750,000 to $800,000 to fund their deficit, and as they reported at their last meeting, they have about a $200,000 school lunch deficit that we have to come up with a recommendation on how we want to fund that. So there are a few things that we're still working on, that are still up in the air, and I think at the next Board of Finance meeting, you should have a lot of the carryovers at that meeting and transfers to close out the fiscal year. And the only other thing, although, I don't have anything to report on the new year yet, actually, you know, we're only one month into it. If anybody has any questions on the 2019-20 report, I can answer them. Does anybody have any questions?
Just for clarification purposes, in your section of your report where you talk about 2019, 2020, you do note that there's two areas of revenue that are trending higher already after one month.
Yes, okay, yep. Building permits are up higher than they should be, and the conveyance taxes as well. They're at 15.1% of budget, and building permits at 17%. So those are trending higher than we had anticipated, or they're trending higher now. I mean, we'll see how the year progresses.
Good omens, though, for the year.
Through the Chair?
Yes.
Dan, when is... Do you anticipate us going back into the marketplace on bonding?
So, that is something, actually, I put on my to-do list today, was to look at where we are with our capital projects and our financing. Obviously, I want to see where our cash flow is. I don't anticipate that we will do any bond issues this fiscal year. I probably will recommend a no-issue this year. I think because of the budget and the way everything has been going, I think this year we would do a no-issue and then finance in 2021.
Based on projected interest rate changes, as, you know, I had a long talk with Byrne, our wealth advisors, based on what we may see for changes in interest rates, how long does it take you guys to gear up if we needed to go to the market? If we wanted to change that direction?
And issue bonds now.
Yeah, well, let's say if we wanted to do it this fiscal year, how long would it take you to get that thing done?
It would probably take us a couple of weeks to review all of the capital projects, just to see what we needed, but then from that point forward, we would have to work with the financial advisor, bond council, get... I don't think anything has to come back to you, because I think you have all the authorizations in place.
So, based on economics, if we wanted to make some changes, that would be something we could turn the ship around pretty quickly?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Through the Chair, David, you're referring to, what's being talked about, like in Europe, et cetera, now with the negative stuff?
I'm on the... I'm on the Retirement Board, and we've had conversations with our advisors, and based on what I read, and based on, you know, what we're seeing out there, there's... And the election due next year at national level, you know, we may see some significant changes that may... We may take advantage of. I know we got whipsawed a little bit this last time, and if we can project this thing out, where maybe we can, you know, trim the fat a little bit, maybe we'd be in good shape. I just want to... I just want to know what the planning horizon is, that's all.
Right, there is a few-week lead time. By the time bond council can get everything together, and the financial advisor puts together the official statement, and we mark it, we will need to do rating reviews as well. So I mean, there is... There is a good four-week lead time before we actually issue. We can do it pretty quickly.
Well, I think that should be an issue when you... For Board of Finance, when you deal with those guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other questions of the Controller? Hearing none? Then the next item is a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Oh, okay. And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will start the City Council meeting at 7:10. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the August City Council meeting. I'd like to ask for opening ceremonies, that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be presented tonight by Hunter DeVoe from PAC 425. Hunter, go ahead.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Hunter. Our moment of reflection is a moment of silence for all the victims of the Dayton and El Paso terrorist attacks, domestic and otherwise, as well as all the other incidents in the 250 other American cities in this calendar year. Thank you. With the members of the City Council, please introduce themselves, starting on my far right.
Peter Kelly, District Two.
Greg Hahn, District One.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
Dave Proleski, District Two.
Dave Mills, District Three.
Councilman Scott Rosado will be joining us shortly. He is attending to some park duties over at Rockwell Park, and I'm Mayor Ellen Zappo-Sassu. The first item on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the regular City Council meeting on July 9th, 2019, as well as the special meeting on July 22nd, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or clarification needed on the minutes as presented? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is public participation, and tonight's nonprofit spotlight is the Friends of the Bristol Public Library. I believe I saw some of our friends here. Who's going to be addressing the council on behalf of the Friends? Roseanne? Welcome.
Let's figure this out. I'm too short. Okay. My name is Roseanne Chaffield, and I'm one of the Friends, and we have some Friends and staff members and Library Board members here also supporting me. I'd like to begin by just reading a short statement from the Friends of the Bristol Library, taken from their Constitution, written in the 1980s. Section 1, "The purpose of the Friends shall be to maintain an organization of persons interested in good library service and in books, to increase the facilities and services of the Bristol Public Library, and thus to enrich the cultural opportunities available to the cities... Citizens of Bristol and Forestville." And then it goes on to say, "The activities of this organization shall include sponsoring special projects, informing the public of the resources and services of the library, securing materials that are beyond the command of the ordinary library budget, and performing other services deemed helpful to the library." This statement is still accurate today. "In the early years, the Friends consisted of a small group of Bristol citizens interested in supporting the library and further enhancing their own personal growth. Programs for members and the general public were held quarterly. Some topics that were offered were gardening, psychic fairs, travel shows, positive thinking, and author talks. The Friends promote illiteracy through participation at community events. Since 2008, the focus of the Friends has changed. Now, our primary goal is to provide funds to the library, so the staff can research and plan programs that enrich the cultural opportunities available to the citizens of Bristol and Forestville. The Friends are very proud of some mini-grants that we created that support these programs. An average of eight special programs a year that address a wide variety of interests and age groups are chosen from applications submitted by library staff. The programs funded by our mini-grants are always free of charge and open to the general public. In order to fund additional programs and services at the library, and to fulfill a wish list for equipment, the Friends raise money through the sale of donated books and through a memorial honor wall. The used book sales provide people with the opportunity to purchase affordable used books of good quality, and the annual winter book sale brings in buyers from all over Connecticut and from surrounding states. We rely on the generosity of library patrons who continue to provide us with donations to fill our bookstore and our lobby sale areas. We also provide free books weekly in the lobby of the main library, at the Man Ross Library, and in our own little bookstore. And we also give books to children and young adults for free during the summer reading program. The Friends would not be able to accomplish any of this without the dedicated people who have joined together to make it all possible. We not only raise the funds to support the library, but also help out whenever the library needs a hand with a special project. Our satisfaction is in seeing how many people participate and enjoy the various programs that the library is able to provide with our support, such as the summer reading program, which is ending this week, that reach all levels of readers, from toddlers to adults. We often hear from first-time visitors how nice the Bristol Library is, and we are very proud to be a part of it. The support that the Friends have been shown by Director Deb Prozo, her staff, and the Library Board has been crucial to our success, and we could not operate without their cooperation and encouragement. We also are always looking for new volunteers, and you can pick up a brochure at the Bristol Public Library if you'd like to join us. Public Library if you'd like to join us. Thank you for taking the time to acknowledge us tonight as the nonprofit of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move into announcements, and I'm going to start with Councilman Kelly. Do you have any announcements for tonight?
I do. I have one, Your Honor. The Hartford Business Journal recently introduced their 40 Under 40, which is the 40 top young professionals under 40 years of age from around the region. And three of these honorees call Bristol home. The first is Rachel DeCavage, and Rachel is the owner and lead designer of Cinder Plus Salt, which is an eco-friendly clothing and lifestyle brand in Middletown. Mark Moriarty is the second, and Mark is the executive director of the First T of Connecticut, which is a youth development organization that introduces positive values through the game of golf. And the third honoree is Magdalena G. Jondro, and Magdalena is the partner and financial advisor with Jondro Wealth Management LLC. We're since joining the firm in 2016, has increased revenue by 10%, and she has done this mainly with emphasizing strategic efforts to penetrate key demographics like women and millennial investors. So congratulation to all 40 honorees throughout the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Han?
I have no announcements this evening.
Councilman Fortier?
No announcements for me, thank you.
Councilman Proleski?
Yeah, one, please. St. Stan's Lost Church in Bristol is celebrating its 100th year in existence, and throughout the year they have events. One of the bigger fundraisers for the church will be next, next month on September 7th and the 8th. It's their fall festival with entertainment, great food, and I just want to mark your calendars if you can get there, 7th and 8th, and on the church grounds in, on West Street. Thank you.
None, Your Honor.
None, Your Honor.
Okay. We also have some important information up on the board that we'll be showing throughout the meeting. They also appear at the end of the nutmeg broadcast. I have one announcement that I'd like to make, and we just concluded a very successful tax collection month for our new fiscal year. Our tax collector's office was very busy during the month of July, and I just wanted to share some stats because there's always, you know, the grumbling of taxpayers, people complaining about standing in line or having to pay taxes in general, or complaining about city employees and overtime for the tax office. And I'm here to tell you that none of that is true. So for those of you who rely on social media for your impressions about the tax office, you should probably check the facts. And here's what some of them are. We have a five-employee tax office, and in fact, we lost a half-time employee who is usually pretty integral during tax collection season. So they were, there are five main employees during the month of July. We do allow people to pay taxes online even up until the last minute, and there was no overtime incurred by the tax office. Kudos to our staff. The lines are there because most people either have issues with both the assessors or DMV or the tax office, and they have to rectify that paperwork because they hadn't done so during the year. There is also many people from our older generation who really prefer to paying cash, and they want that written receipt, and so they have to stand in line for that as well. The comparison from last year to this year for countertransactions, which is actually people in line, has gone down 2,000, which means there's less transactions and less people in line. Similarly, online payments that are posted in-house, that has increased by over 1,000, which means more people are paying online. And there's also the lockbox payments, so you can actually come here and you can put it in, and that is, instead of having to mail them in, which is also an option, that is actually increased as well. So there are 404 additional payments that people just made at the lockbox, didn't have to use a stamp or worry about the mail. They just came here and put it in the box. So we're still processing a lot of the payments in-house, and without giving away a lot of the money from a security standpoint, which our tax collector asked me not to do, although I'm proud of our numbers, I will tell you that there are $4 million that were collected in the month of July just on credit cards. So that's just a little fact check and interesting note about our tax collector's office. I think all of those women did a great job, and there are actually letters in their file this month based on recommendations from the department head. So, anybody have any questions about tax collection or stats? Okay. I'd also like to ask the indulgence of the city council, because we do have some key appointments tonight and we have some family present, if we could make a motion to go from finishing item 4, which is announcements, and go right to appointments for number 10?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on moving appointments up in the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So we do have a few for tonight. The first is to reappoint Nicholas Jones for section 2-9 for an unexpired term to the Board of Finance for June 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Police Commissioners to appoint James Burnier to replace Anthony D'Amato, section 2-9 resignation, unexpired term to 12 of 21.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals to reappoint Richard Raymond to a three-year term to July of 2022.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Noggetuck Valley Council of Governments, this is a mayor's appointment for the record. I'd like to show that I'm appointing Ray Rogazinski to be my proxy and delegate to Noggetuck Valley Council of Governments when I am unable to attend. He replaces Robert Flanagan, who has served in that role up until this point. Acting mayor. To appoint Peter Kelly to replace Dave Proleski, three-month term to November of 2019. That also is a mayor's appointment. And let's see. Fair Housing Officer, in light of Eileen McNulty's retirement, I am appointing Anne Rae Sungren to fill that role for the City of Bristol. That, too, is a mayor's appointment. And interim Director of Youth Services, another mayor's appointment. I just want everybody to be clear and on the record that Dr. Joshua Maduros is serving in that dual role, park superintendent as well as the interim director. We are in the process of a strategic planning piece with youth services, community services, and the park board, so we'll be hearing more about that probably in the next four weeks. We have vacancies on the Building Code Board of Appeals. We have a vacancy on the Fire Commission. We have a vacancy on the Housing Code Appeals Board. So if anyone is interested in any of those positions or knows someone who would like to serve, they could send a letter or an email to my office, and we will vet them according to the state statute for parity between parties as well as suitability for those roles. And finally, tonight, it is my pleasure to appoint Thomas Lozier as Chief Building Official, which is effective date of August 22nd, 2019, for a four-year term to August of 2023, replacing Guy Moran, who will be retiring next Thursday.
So moved.
It is a mayor's appointment, but I think it's important for council to have buy-in and understanding of the department heads that we're putting in place. I'd like to ask Tom to stand. He's here with his wife and his three sons. Tom, I'm going to put you on the spot, but I think you should come to the podium and say a few words. Tom has been a city employee for X number of years with a very interesting job history here, and I think it's just a really great story that I think everybody should enjoy and see what happens with a promotion from within when people have that trajectory and ability to succeed. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the kind words. So I started working with the City of Bristol in April of 1990, and I started in the Building Maintenance Division as a maintenance custodial person for about 18 years. During those 18 years, I got to work with all the different city departments. I got to know all the players, and that was a really important part of me developing the person that I am. About eight years ago, I got a job working in the Bristol Development Authority, and I got a really lot of experience in the BDA. And then I went back to school working towards my building official certificate, which I got. And here I am, 30 years later, appointed as the building official. If you work hard and you keep your nose to the grindstone, you can really make things happen. And I thank you for the kind words, and I thank my family for all the support over the years. And I really appreciate this appointment. Thank you very much.
So, going back to our agenda, we are at our consent calendar, and we have items A through I that are presented tonight for consent. Does anybody have any items that they'd like to pull out for questions or further clarification?
Through the chair, Your Honor, I'd like to pull out item G because I just have a few comments to make on that.
Okay, we'll remove item G from the consent calendar. Anything else? Okay, so let's pull out item G for discussion first. Councilman Fortier?
Thank you. Item G is a contract for the architectural services for the Stafford Elementary School roof replacement, and I am on that committee. And I am very pleased to report that the Board of Education Operations Committee has approved pursuing solar panels with this new roof project. When the roof committee, which I'm a member, interviewed these architects, they're the ones that told us that the state is now reimbursing for solar panels for school roof projects, something they have not done in the past. We expect that reimbursement to be about 67% of the cost if we pursue solar. So I'm very hopeful this will be the first of many solar projects for Bristol City roofs. Very excited about it. And there was bipartisan support from the Board of Education on that, so very excited. Thanks.
Does the Energy Commission know about this, Councilman Han?
We are aware of the effort, yes.
Good, okay. That's great. So we're going to have to vote on 5G separately, so all in favor of that item? It's been made in the form of a motion. Did we have a second?
Second.
Someone second it? Okay, Councilman Han, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now for the rest of the consent calendar, 5A through F, and then H and I, is there a motion?
Move to accept the remainder of the consent calendar.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to reports and committee reports. We'll start with the Ordinance Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The, the Ordinance Committee is working on updating section 17-18 regarding use of streets, and I have a motion. I hereby move that the time and place of Wednesday, August 21st, 2019, at 4:45 PM in the first-floor meeting room, City Hall 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the Ordinance Committee, and that the city clerk publish notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by the city charter.
So moved.
Has been a motion and a second?
Second.
Any conversation on this public hearing or the ordinance in general?
What we're doing is we're upgrading the streets to include the new street that goes through Center Square.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next item on the agenda we'll take first is 6B, which is any updates regarding Memorial Boulevard?
I have one, thank you, Your Honor. The committee is working with the State of Connecticut and the State Historical Society on a recommendation to, for the grand entryway for the building. As you might imagine, all of the interested parties within the state have different priorities, and oftentimes they conflict, but what we're trying to do is to preserve the integrity of the building for the entryway and balance that with the need for safety and security issues. So that's been forwarded, and it's getting down to the nitty-gritty detail, and we expect some action on that within the month. The zoning applications have been applied for and fulfilled. We've gone through the zoning process, and that the next significant issue for the committee will be the reconciliation of the remediation issues, which are ongoing right now. And our next meeting is August 22nd at 6:30 at the Board of Ed. Thank you.
August 22nd? Okay. Okay, do we have a real estate committee report for tonight?
Your Honor, thank you. We had a special meeting, and the Councilman Han has a motion.
I hereby move that the following property be referred to the Planning Commission for the CGS 824 report for the purpose of acquiring a certain parcel of land known as Lot 35B Lake Avenue.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is the item regarding the open space adjacent to the hoppers still in committee?
It is.
Okay. Do we have any reports from the Salary Committee tonight?
We do, Your Honor. I have two items. We also had a special Salary Committee meeting today. Item one is to approve a request from the Superintendent of Water to eliminate the local 233 positions of payroll slash benefits analyst from the Water Department, an administrative assistant slash accountant from the Water Pollution Control Department, and to create a new position of accounting assistant slash payroll analyst for the Water Department. All is presented and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
Yes, Your Honor. You want to just go over the savings, et cetera?
Yes. This has to do with the Sewer Department being integrated with the Water Department, and one of those folks has retired, the person that had previously been at the Sewer Department full-time and had moved over to the Water Department for some time. And for the months that she was there, she basically trained the folks at the Water Department to do a lot of her duties. So many of those duties have been spread among current Water Department personnel. And the way our Water Superintendent explained it, because all the accounting for both departments is now at the Water Department, the accountant needs an assistant. So basically, we're eliminating two previous positions and creating one slightly higher grade. So there is a savings of about $40,000 a year between getting rid of two and adding one, which is a slightly higher pay grade.
There's also the savings for insurance and pension contributions as well.
Yes, absolutely.
Are there any other comments regarding the Salary Committee motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have another motion?
I do. Item two from the Salary Committee is to approve a request from the registrar voters to increase the pay rates of election workers as presented. Some of this stems from the fact that the minimum wage will be increasing on October 1st, and our election will be shortly thereafter, and some of our poll workers have been making minimum wage. So the registrars jointly came to us and asked that their pay be increased for most poll workers to $12 an hour so that they will not have to come back to us for another two years. In other words, it's slightly more than what the increase would be for this year. And some of the other workers that get a base pay for the day, they're asking, they asked for a slight increase for them as well, and those workers had not received a raise since 2011, so that was approved unanimously as well.
So is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
And a second from Councilman Mills? Any further conversation? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, starting on my far left, are there any other committee reports?
No, Your Honor.
None, Your Honor. None.
No, Your Honor.
No. And none for me.
Moving on to unfinished business, is there any unfinished business from the council?
I do, Your Honor.
Councilman Mills?
I have a couple bullet points I'd like to talk about, but I'm concerned about the turf fields at both high schools. As you know, we've been playing on those fields for three years, and we all know how hard the people worked to get the approvals, and we all know about the controversy of crumb rubber versus the alternatives. This is a multimillion-dollar project. A lot of people have asked me, "How come we haven't had a grand opening on any of the fields?" Well, the reason is that the fields are in disrepair. They have, they had a problem with the fields, and let's all explain a little bit, and it hasn't been addressed. What has happened is they did have a couple rips in the field that they did repair, but currently both fields have, the carpet has pulled away from the curbing, about 12 inches away from the curbing. And currently, it's filled with stone dust or some type of material. I know that the Corporation Council has addressed it. I know that Chris Cass, our athletic director, has addressed it. And they have contacted all the players, which I mean by players would be the turf company, the installer, the architect, et cetera. And what has happened is that it's been one of these deals. It's your fault, no, it's your fault, no, it's your fault, no, it's your fault, no, it's your fault. Well, it's been three years. We have a 10-year warranty on the product. My concern is that, number one, is that the clock is running. Obviously, we want to start when we reported this thing. We want to go all the way back to when it was started. This has been a multimillion-dollar project. We expect it to be perfect. If we paid for something that we wanted to have, we expect it to get that. So what I'm asking is, you all know that I am not running for the next term, so I have two more meetings. What I'd like to do is have a report, if we could, by the next meeting, from our athletic director and from Corporation Council to know exactly where we stand. This is something that the, everybody, the citizens of Bristol, these are soap pieces for our athletic department. And they're wonderful fields, they've gotten great use, but obviously... And they're wonderful fields, they've gotten great use, but obviously, they're not perfect as they should be. When you pay for a product, you should get something that you deserve. You should get a product that you pay for, and this is something we did not pay for. And I will, as you know, you may remember, there was some concern about crumb rubber versus other product, et cetera. It seems as though the one we went with has had several problems throughout the state and throughout the region. Not to say crumb rubber doesn't have a problem, but we have a problem in Bristol. Let's get what we're supposed to get, and let's have a report, if we could, by our next meeting. So if we need a motion or whatever, I don't know if we do or not, but...
I don't think we do. I think we can ask Corporation Council's office to ensure that that information is organized, and we could have it as an agenda item for September. Okay.
I'm sure you do. And can we get, maybe, the Board of Education's point of view as well? Here's the thing that bothers me. I was asking about this, and I know that I've talked to Attorney Lacy several times, and he's been very generous, letting us know that you've talked about this. But the problem is, it's now been three years, and we're getting... We don't seem to be getting anywhere. I stopped down today, it's still there, the problem is still there. I mean, all we'd have to have is someone have a safety issue where someone falls on something that's defective. We're gonna be on the hook for a lot of money. So, thank you for listening to me, and again, I think that that's something that a lot of people are very concerned about, and I know I am as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? New business? Okay. Resignations?
We have one resignation, Your Honor. It's from Patricia Tomasak from the School Readiness Council.
Motion to accept and place on file?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We've already handled item 10, and moving on to Agenda Item 11, which is the approval of acceptable recyclables processing agreement between Bristol and Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee and Murphy Road Recycling. This has been just yet another chapter in what we've been dealing with all year, and the Public Works impact to our budget. So, we... Through our consortium, we finally have an agreement. The amount that I think we've settled on is $84.06 per ton for recyclable materials. That's the latest communication, right, Ray? So, just to... What? Market-dependent. So, right now... So, last year, we received a credit of $9 per ton, which was considered a revenue for our budget. So as of July 1, we are now paying $84.06 for every ton of recyclables that are processed out of Bristol. So this has been something that the Public Works Budget Committee, Board, and staff have had to adjust for, and so we're thinking we're gonna be impacted probably close to $400,000, just based on this one transaction. We're gonna continue to work with our committee, as well as DEEP, to show them the impact and see if we can have some type of policy impact in terms of making that list changeable, in terms of what's in and what's out from a recyclable standpoint, because I think that's gonna be one of the only other things that's gonna provide relief. But we will keep you posted on that. But this is a community effort with us and the other communities that comprise this, and I would urge its adoption.
And, Your Honor, there is a motion? Somebody would like to read it?
I have a motion, Your Honor. I move that the acceptable recyclables processing agreement between Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee and Murphy Road Recycling be approved, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item was the subject of our public hearing earlier tonight. It's the approval to place the question concerning the continuation of the Connecticut City and Town Development Act on the November 5, 2019, election ballot, and to waive the reading of the resolution, but to include it as part of the minutes. We did cover this within the public hearing earlier, so does anybody have the motion up?
I do, Your Honor. When we're waiving the resolution, I'm not sure what I should read, because it's long.
It's just to approve the City-Town Development Act resolution as presented to the board.
Okay. So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Resolution, sorry, starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 And the mayor votes yes. Thank you. And the next item is related, and it's to authorize the preparation of explanatory text for the question regarding the City and Town Development Act on the November 5, 2019 ballot.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So now, we're at the point of our agenda where we have multitude of executive sessions. I'm gonna ask our Corporation Council to come to the podium. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5... I thought we had 6.
Couple have multiple ones.
We have 8.
What I would ask is if we could take them a little bit in a different order.
Sure.
If we could take number 15, the executive session to discuss the matter of the City of Bristol versus TSKP Studio LLC et al. And that would be Attorney Lawrence Rosenthal from Rogan Nassau. He's our outside counsel, and my office, Attorneys Lacy, Steg, Conlin, and myself.
Okay.
And that has to do with the issue with the Green Hills problems with the...
Green Hill School?
Green Hill School. So that would... I'd ask we would take that one first. Then, the workers' compensation matters should be fairly quick, I believe, and that would be Attorney Lacy, Attorney Steg, and myself.
Do we have any other outside counsel that we should take ahead of that?
We do, actually. Number 16, that would be... Let's do that one next, if that's okay. That would be executive session to discuss the matter of City of Bristol versus Daniel Satula. And that would be Attorney Barry Thompson, our assessor, Tom DiNoto, and Tom Conlin, Attorney Conlin, and myself.
Okay.
Okay? Then, the workers' comp, again, number 14, Attorney Lacy, Attorney Steg, and myself. Number 17, those are tax appeals, that would be Attorney Conlin and Tom DiNoto, our assessor, and myself. And then, also, 18, those are also tax appeals, Attorney Conlin, assessor, DiNoto, and myself.
Okay. So, at this point, we're gonna make a motion to go into executive session to consider the items as presented in order of 15, 16, 14, 17, and 18, with the people stated as outlined by the Corporation Council.
So moved.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I forgot one more person. I wanted to ask if also our comptroller could join us on the first executive session. I'm sorry, Diane.
So moved.
15, with Green Hills?
15, yes.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion to reconvene into public session.
So moved.
Second.
Like the record to show that no votes were taken in executive session. Do we have any motions to come forward tonight?
Yes, Your Honor. In the first matter, which is number what on our agenda?
15.
15. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement agreement with Strategic Building Solutions LLC, a defendant in the matter of City of Bristol versus TSKP Studio LLC at docket number XO7HHD CV176084696S, in consideration of a payment to the City of Bristol of $88,491. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further questions?
I found this on the web.
Ay, ay, ay. It's getting late.
Okay. Hearing none, other? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions?
Yes, Your Honor. In regard to number 16, I hereby move that the matter of the City of Bristol versus Daniel P. Satula, docket number HHBCV196050192S, an action to collect real estate taxes personally from Daniel P. Satula for unpaid real estate taxes he owes to the city for property known as Lot 2022 Open Space on Warner Street be settled on the following terms. One, that the city acquire ownership of Lot 20 and 22 Open Space for obtaining a report from the Planning Commission pursuant to Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statutes. Number two, that Daniel P. Satula is released from all real estate tax liability owed to the City of Bristol for said Lot 20 and 22 Open Space. Number three, that Daniel P. Satula pay the City of Bristol the sum of $3,000 toward the city's legal fees and costs in bringing this action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any conversation on the motion as presented?
Yes, Your Honor. I'm not supportive of this, because with the liability and the expense that the city could incur on land that has no worth, cannot be resold or built upon, it's counterproductive, and so I would not support this.
Any other comments?
I agree with Councilman Han.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
No.
No.
For the record, the chair votes yes. Are there any other motions to come before?
Your Honor, in Agenda Item Number 14, I have a motion. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement of a workers' compensation claim in the matter of Russell Marsham versus the City of Bristol, docket number WCC601022607, in consideration of a payment of $125,000, and that the matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary funding. I further move that the Corporation Council or assistant Corporation Council be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the settlement.
Second.
Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Also, in number 14 on the agenda, another item from that... Excuse me. Another matter, motion, from that agenda item. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement of workers' compensation claim in the matter of Frank L. Sanders versus the City of Bristol, workers' compensation claim number 601023805, in consideration of a payment of $249,900, and that the matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary funding. I further move that the Corporation Council or assistant Corporation Council be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come before the council?
I have one, Your Honor. I hereby move that the matter of Terry Enterprises versus the City of Bristol Superior Court, docket number HHB-CV-18-6044876-S, be resolved by stipulation to judgment, and that the assessor be authorized to adjust the assessment of the property, the subject property, at the value of $3 million for the 2017 grand list, with any tax overpayments being credited to future tax obligations. The Corporation Council is authorized to execute the stipulation to judgment on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any additional motions?
Yes, I have a motion, Your Honor. I hereby move that the matter of 23 Fair Street Property LLC versus the City of Bristol Superior Court, docket number HHB-CV-18-60445155-S, be resolved by stipulation to judgment, and that the assessor to be authorized to adjust the assessment on the subject property at a value of $3,900,000 for the 2017 grand list, with any tax overpayments being credited to future tax obligations. The Corporation Council is authorized to execute the stipulation to judgment on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any further motions?
I have one, Your Honor. I hereby move that the matter of Terry Enterprises versus City of Bristol Superior Court, docket HHB-CV-19-6052555-S, be resolved by stipulation to judgment, and that the assessor be authorized to adjust the assessment on the subject property at a value of $250,000 for the 2018 grand list, with any tax overpayments being credited to future tax obligations. The Corporation Council is authorized to execute the stipulation to judgment on behalf of the City of Bristol.
Second.
Has there been a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any other business proper to come before our meeting tonight? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Bristol's Farmers Market has been a staple of the Bristol community for several years. The season will begin in June and run through October. Products range from farm-fresh vegetables, fruits, and products from local farms, to homemade beef jerky, to baked goods, coffee, maple syrup, and other locally-made treats. One of the original farm vendors, Gressik Farms, will be returning again to the Bristol Farmers Market. We recently spoke with Henry Gressik about his family's farm and his participation at Bristol's Farmers Market.
I enjoy participating in the Bristol Farmers Market because I get to connect with the end user of the products that we grow. Seeing the end user and sending them away happy with something that I grew inspires me to continue on farming with my family.
For more information on Bristol's Farmers Market, you can find us on all social media platforms and at www.bristolallheart.com.